1 2 3 4 5 6 7 8 9 10 11 12 13 14 15 16 17 18 19 20 21 22 23 24 25 26 27 28 29 30 31 32 33 34 35 36 37 38 39 40 41 42 43 44 45 46 47 48 49 50 51 52 53 54 55 56 57 58 59 60 61 62 63 64 65 66 67 68 69 70 71 72 73 74 75 76 77 78 79 80 81 82 83 84 85 86 87 88 89 90 91 92 93 94 95 96 97 98 99 100 101 102 103 104 105 106 107 108 109 110 111 112 113 114 115 116 117 118 119 120 121 122 123 124 125 126 127 128 129 130 131 132 133 134 135 136 137 138 139 140 141 142 143 144 145 146 147 148 149 150 151 152 153 154 155 156 157 158 159 160 161 162 163 164 165 166 167 168 169 170 171 172 173 174 175 176 177 178 179 180 181 182 183 184 185 186 187 188 189 190 191 192 193 200 201 202 203 204 205 206 207 208 209 210 211 212 213 214 215 216 217 218 219 220 221 222 223 224 225 226 227 228 229 230 231 232 233 234 235 236 237 238 239 240 241 242 243 244 245 246 247 248 249 250 251 252 253 254 255 256 257 258 259 260 261 262 263 264 265 266 267 268 269 270 271 272 273 274 275 276 277 278 279 280 281 282 283 284 285 286 287 288 289 290 291 292 293 294 295 296 297 298 299 300 301 302 303 304 305 306 307 308 309 310 311 312 313 314 315 316 317 318 319 320 321 322 323 324 325 326 327 328 329 330 331 332 333 334 335 336 337 338 339 340 341 342 343 344 345 346 347 348 349 350 351 352 353 354 355 356 357 358 359 360 361 362 363 364 365 366 367 368 369 370 371 372 373 374 375 376 377 378 379 380 381 382 383 384 385 386 387 388 389 390 391 392 393 394 395 396 397 398 399 400 401 402 403 404 405 406 407 408 409 410 411 412 413 414 415 416 417 418 419 420 421 422 423 424 425 426 427 428 429 430 431 432 433 434 435 436 437 438 439 440 441 442 443 444 445 446 447 448 449 450 451 452 453 454 455 456 457 458 459 460 461 462 463 464 465 466 467 468 469 470 471 472 473 474 475 476 477 478 479 480 481 482 483 484 485 486 487 488 489 490 491 492 493 494 495 496 497 498 499 500 501 502 503 504 505 506 507 508 509 510 511 512 513 514 515 516 517 518 519 520 521 522 523 524 525 526 527 528 529 530 531 532 533 534 535 536 537 538 539 540 541 542 543 544 545 546 547 548 549 550 551 552 553 554 555 556 557 558 559 560 561 562 563 564 565 566 567 568 569 570 571 572 573 574 575 576 577 578 579 580 581 582 583 584 585 586 587 588 589 590 591 592 593 594 595 596 597 598 600 601 602 603 604 605 606 607 608 609 610 611 612 613 614 615 616 617 618 619 620 621 622 623 624 625 626 627 628 629 630 631 632 633 634 635 636 637 638 639 640 641 642 643 644 645 646 647 648 649 650 651 652 653 654 655 656 657 658 659 660 661 662 663 664 665 666 667 668 669 670 671 672 673 674 675 676 677 678 679 680 681 682 683 684 685 686 687 688 689 690 691 692 693 694 695 696 697 698 699 700 701 702 703 704 705 706 707 708 709 710 711 712 713 714 715 716 717 718 719 720 721 722 723 724 725 726 727 728 729 730 731 732 733 734 735 736 737 738 739 740 741 742 743 744 745 746 747 748 749 750 751 752 753 754 755 756 757 758 759 760 761 762 763 764 765 766 767 768 769 770 771 772 773 774 775 776 777 778 779 780
1 2 3 4 5 6 7 8 9 10 11 12 13 14 15 16 17 18 19 20 21 22 23 24 25 26 27 28 29 30 31 32 33 34 35 36 37 38 39 40 41 42 43 44 45 46 47 48 49 50 51 52 53 54 55 56 57 58 59 60 61 62 63 64 65 66 67 68 69 70 71 72 73 74 75 76 77 78 79 80 81 82 83 84 85 86 87 88 89 90 91 92 93 94 95 96 97 98 99 100 101 102 103 104 105 106 107 108 109 110 111 112 113 114 115 116 117 118 119 120 121 122 123 124 125 126 127 128 129 130 131 132 133 134 135 136 137 138 139 140 141 142 143 144 145 146 147 148 149 150 151 152 153 154 155 156 157 158 159 160 161 162 163 164 165 166 167 168 169 170 171 172 173 174 175 176 177 178 179 180 181 182 183 184 185 186 187 188 189 190 191 192 193 194 195 196 197 198 200 201 202 203 204 205 206 207 208 209 210 211 212 213 214 215 216 217 218 219 220 221 222 223 224 225 226 227 228 229 230 231 232 233 234 235 236 237 238 239 240 241 242 243 244 245 246 247 248 249 250 251 252 253 254 255 256 257 258 259 260 261 262 263 264 265 266 267 268 269 270 271 272 273 274 275 276 277 278 279 280 281 282 283 284 285 286 287 288 289 290 291 292 293 294 295 296 297 298 299 300 301 302 303 304 305 306 307 308 309 310 311 312 313 314 315 316 317 318 319 320 321 322 323 324 325 326 327 328 329 330 331 332 333 334 335 336 337 338 339 340 341 342 343 344 345 346 347 348 349 350 351 352 353 354 355 356 357 358 359 360 361 362 363 364 365 366 367 368 369 370 371 372 373 374 375 376 377 378 379 380 381 382 383 384 385 386 387 388 389 390 391 392 393 394 395 396 397 398 399 400 401 402 403 404 405 406 407 408 409 410 411 412 413 414 415 416 417 418 419 420 421 422 423 424 425 426 427 428 429 430 431 432 433 434 435 436 437 438 439 440 441 442 443 444 445 446 447 448 449 450 451 452 453 454 455 456 457 458 459 460 461 462 463 464 465 466 467 468 469 470 471 472 473 474 475 476 477 478 479 480 481 482 483 484 485 486 487 488 489 490 491 492 493 494 495 496 497 498 499 500 501 502 503 504 505 506 507 508 509 510 511 512 513 514 515 516 517 518 519 520 521 522 523 524 525 526 527 528 529 530 531 532 533 534 535 536 537 538 539 540 541 542 543 544 545 546 547 548 549 550 551 552 553 554 555 556 557 558 559 560 561 562 563 564 565 566 567 568 569 570 571 572 573 574 575 576 577 578 579 580 581 582 583 584 585 586 587 588 589 590 591 592 593 594 595 596 597 598 600 601 602 603 604 605 606 607 608 609 610 611 612 613 614 615 616 617 618 619 620 621 622 623 624 625 626 627 628 629 630 631 632 633 634 635 636 637 638 639 640 641 642 643 644 645 646 647 648 649 650 651 652 653 654 655 656 657 658 659 660 661 662 663 664 665 666 667 668 669 670 671 672 673 674 675 676 677 678 679 680 681 682 683 684 685 686 687 688 689 690 691 692 693 694 695 696 697 698 699 700 701 702 703 704 705 706 707 708 709 710 711 712 713 714 715 716 717 718 719 720 721 722 723 724 725 726 727 728 729 730 731 732 733 734 735 736 737 738 739 740 741 742 743 744 745 746 747 748 749 750 751 752 753 754 755 756 757 758 759 760 761 762 763 764 765 766 767 768 769 770 771 772 773 774 775 776 777 778 779 780
Senator Aridus?
Yes.
Senator Christian? Senator Figuer? Senator Figuer?
I'm here.
Senator Kulan? Floor Leader Harper?
Basilia May.
Basilia, Senator Conman? Ay, inisranem. Vice Speaker Moses? Senator Ned? Senator Paluk?
Uwa, morning.
Senator Perman? Senator Romalo? Senator Rosamal? Senator Wali?
Yes.
Speaker Simana?
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, nine members are present.
We do have a quorum to transact business this morning, reading of the journal for later.
Thank you, Speaker, and good morning to you and all honorable members, staff, all those who are observing our session this morning. Again, I move to dispense with the reading of our journal.
Again. And move then second that I would dispense with the reading of the journal, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. David cannot dispense with the reading of the journal, next item, Chief Burke.
The next item is item five, presidential communications, we have one and it's number twenty-two dash twenty, two hundred twenty-three.
Yes, I am done, Chief Burke, next item.
Item six, USM Supreme Court communications, none, Mr. Speaker.
Continue.
Item seven, member communications, none also. Item eight, departmental communications, none, Mr. Speaker. Item nine, agency or governmental authority communications, none. Item number ten, state communications, none, Mr. Speaker. The next item is item eleven, state Supreme Court communications, none. Item number twelve, municipal or town communications, none, Mr. Speaker. Item number thirteen, foreign government communications, none also. And item number fourteen, miscellaneous communications, none, Mr. Speaker.
We're now on our order of the day. Item fifteen, standing committee reports, Chief Burke, do we have any standing committee report?
Mr. Speaker, as of now, we do not have any standing committee reports.
What about item sixteen, special committee reports, do we have any?
None also, Mr. Speaker.
Right, so next item.
Item number seventeen, assignment of measures and communications, I kindly note that we do not have a referral sheet, Mr. Speaker.
Short resuscitation of the document. Congress back in session, so next item, Chief Burke.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, the next item is item number eighteen, unfinished business, none at the moment, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, we're now on our bill calendar, first bill.
The first bill under the bill calendar now is congressional bill number twenty-two dash one forty-one, CD one, for second and final reading. CB number twenty-two dash one forty-one, CD one, is a bill for an act to further amend public law number twenty-one dash nineteen, as amended by public law numbers twenty-one dash thirty-nine, twenty-one dash seventy-four, twenty-one dash one oh nine, twenty-one dash one fifty-four, and twenty-two dash sixty-six, by amending section six thereof to allow the Constitutional Convention to convene whether in person or virtually during the pandemic period, or by any combination of both in-person and virtual meeting, and for other purposes.
Good, Chairman Figuer?
Move, so move, Mr. Speaker.
Turn in.
Move then second that Congress passed on second and final reading, CP number twenty-two dash one forty-one, CD one. Discussion, any discussion? If none, there is no objection. Discussion is closed, we will vote by roll call of the delegations. Vice Speaker Moses will cast a forward for on this day. Chief Burke.
For the State of Chug, Chairman Aridus?
Yes.
For the State of Bombay, Vice Speaker Moses?
Aye.
For the State of Koshai, Chairman Wali?
Yes.
State of Yap, Chairman Rosamal? State of Yap, Chairman Rosamal? Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
For that reason, CP number twenty-two dash one forty-one, CD one, has passed Congress on first reading, next bill.
The next bill under the bill calendar now is congressional bill number twenty-two dash one forty-nine, for second and final reading. CB number twenty-two dash one forty-nine is a bill for not to amend chapter six of title ten of the Code of the Federated States of Margonisha, annotated by creating a new section six oh six for the purpose of establishing time limits for recalling USM ambassadors and other foreign service personnel who were nominated by the President of the Federated States of Margonisha for advice and consent but not confirmed by Congress and for other purposes.
Chairman Wali?
Do move.
Turn in.
Again. Has been moved and seconded that Congress passed on second and final reading, CP number twenty-two dash one forty-nine. Discussion, discussion, short resuscitation.
Speaker.
Back in session, continue discussion on one forty-nine, any further discussion? If none?
Question.
There's no objection, discussion is now closed, we will vote by roll call of the delegations, Chief Burke.
For the State of Chug, Chairman Aridus?
Yes.
State of Bombay, Vice Speaker Moses? State of Koshai, Chairman Wali?
Yes.
State of Koshai, Chairman Wali?
Yes.
State of Yap, Chairman Rosamal? For the State of Yap, Chairman Rosamal? Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
For that reason, CP number twenty-two dash one forty-nine has passed Congress on second and final reading, next bill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, the next bill under the bill calendar now is congressional bill number twenty-two dash one fifty-seven, for second and final reading. CB number twenty-two dash one fifty-seven is a bill for not to further amend public law number twenty-one dash eighty, as amended by public laws numbers twenty-one dash ninety-nine, twenty-one dash one one zero, twenty-one dash one forty-three, twenty-one dash one eighty-one, twenty-one dash one eighty-eight, twenty-one dash two fourteen, twenty-one dash two forty-two, twenty-two dash nineteen, twenty-two dash thirty-eight, and twenty-two dash fifty-six, by amending sections three thereof to change the use of certain funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs for the people of Koshai State and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuer?
Move for the passage of the said bill on second and final reading.
Turn in.
Has been moved and seconded that Congress passed on second and final reading, CP number twenty-two dash one fifty-seven. Discussion, discussion, any discussion? If none, there is no objection, discussion is closed, we will vote by roll call of the delegation, so Chief Burke.
For the State of Chug, Chairman Aridus?
Yes.
State of Bombay, Vice Speaker Moses? State of Koshai, Chairman Wali?
Yes.
State of Yap, Chairman Rosamal? For the State of Yap, Chairman Rosamal? Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
Can you repeat the result of the vote, this kind of cut off?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
Yes, CP number twenty-two dash one fifty-seven has passed Congress on second and final reading, next bill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, the next bill under the bill calendar now is congressional bill number twenty-two dash one fifty-eight, for second and final reading. CB number twenty-two dash one fifty-eight is a bill for not to further amend public law number twenty dash fifty-three, as amended by public laws numbers twenty dash fifty-seven, twenty dash sixty-one, twenty dash sixty-nine, twenty dash ninety, twenty dash ninety-one, twenty dash ninety-six, twenty dash one thirty-two, twenty-one dash ninety-two, twenty-one dash one thirty-five, twenty-one dash one sixty-eight, twenty-one dash one eighty-nine, twenty-one dash two forty-seven, twenty-two dash forty, and twenty-two dash eighty-four by amending section five thereof to change the dealoty of funds previously appropriated therein for the purpose of funding priority infrastructure projects and other projects and programs in the State of Koshai and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuer?
So move, Mr. Speaker.
Turn in.
Move then second that Congress passed on second and final reading, CP number twenty-two dash one fifty-eight. Discussion, any discussion? If none, there's no objection, discussion is closed, we will forward by roll call of the delegations, Chief Burke.
For the State of Chug, Chairman Aridus?
Yes.
State of Bombay, Vice Speaker Moses? For the State of Koshai, Chairman Wali?
Yes.
State of Yap, Chairman Rosamal?
Aye.
Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
CP number twenty-two dash one fifty-eight has passed Congress on second and final reading, next bill.
The next bill under the bill calendar now is congressional bill number twenty-two dash one fifty-nine, for second and final reading. CB number twenty-two dash one fifty-nine is a bill for not to further amend public law number twenty dash one twenty-five, as amended by public laws numbers twenty dash one thirty-five, twenty dash one forty-six, twenty dash one fifty-seven, twenty dash one seventy-nine, twenty dash one eighty-nine, twenty-one dash oh six, twenty-one dash forty, twenty-one dash fifty-nine, twenty-one dash eighty-nine, twenty-one dash ninety-six, twenty-one dash one forty-one, twenty-one dash one fifty-five, twenty-one dash two seventeen, twenty-one dash two twenty-five, twenty-one dash two thirty, twenty-one dash two thirty-nine, twenty-two dash twenty, twenty-two dash seventy, and twenty-two dash eighty-eight by amending section three thereof to change the use of certain funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs for the people of the State of Koshai and for other purposes.
Okay, Chairman Figuer?
So move.
Turn in.
Has been moved and seconded that Congress passed on second and final reading, CP number twenty-two dash one fifty-nine. Discussion, any discussion? If none, without objection, discussion is closed, we will now vote by roll call of the delegations, Chief Burke.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the State of Chug, Chairman Aridus?
Yes.
State of Bombay, Vice Speaker Moses? State of Koshai, Chairman Wali?
Yes.
State of Yap, Chairman Rosamal?
Yes, yes, yes.
Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
CP number twenty-two dash one fifty-nine has passed Congress on second and final reading. Okay, LC, take note of that item, the word section, should add an N, line four in the title. Okay, next bill.
Mr. Speaker, as of now, we do not have any more bills.
Short resuscitation. Short resist. Congress back in session, uh, any other, uh, business under, uh, bill calendar, Chief Clerk?
None, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, there, item of your business under the bill calendar, we will not vote. Can enter, any resolution?
None, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, item twenty-one, introduction of bills and resolutions. If you have any measure to introduce, please pass them on to Chief Clerk. Now we're down to our, uh, uh, the miscellaneous business. Lady and gentleman. Do we have any, um, do you have any miscellaneous business?
Speaker.
Uh, Florida Leader, Harvard.
I don't, uh, really have any, uh, important miscellaneous business, but uh, I am ready to make motion for adjournment.
Okay, let me just, uh, take this opportunity before you do that. I just want to thank, uh, all of you, the members, uh, of this Congress for, uh, those of you who are present, I thank you. Especially those of you have, all of you have supported the, one of the main reasons why, uh, the president called the special session. And that's for the, for us to, uh, address the concerns regarding the Khan Khan. And I appreciate that because, uh, what we've done, we've allowed them to do what they have to do without them kind of, uh, blaming us or blaming others for, uh, what, uh, may not be. So, I thank you all, uh, members for your support. And, uh, also for the other measures that we have, uh, already, uh, passed. Thank you very much. Any announcement?
Yes, I have one announcement, uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Before I make my announcement, I would also like to, uh, follow Mr. Speaker for thanking everyone. Kisho Tabor for staying back and working on this CP twenty-two one forty-one. Kisho Tabor. Just to share you one, uh, Bible verse and Proverbs twenty-one, twenty-five, it says, "The fear of man brings us near, but whoever trusts in the Lord shall be saved." Oh, and our announcement for, my announcement for today is for the members of, uh, Special Committee on Climate Change and Environmental Issues. If we can meet after this session for something urgent, uh, regarding that, uh, IPU assembly that, uh, they had on twenty-fourth of this month. There is, uh, uh, a theme for it that says the time to act is now for climate change crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Take note, uh, members of the, uh, climate change special committee, uh, we have a meeting immediately after session uh, to, uh, review, uh, that new, uh, uh, thing from, uh, our IPU General Assembly that happened in Bali, I believe. Yeah. Okay, any other announcement? Any?
Speaker.
Florida Leader, Harvard.
Uh, sorry, it's not an announcement, but I should have, uh, made my, uh, statement during the miscellaneous business. Uh, you know, we, we shouldn't be, uh, stop thanking our staff for all their hard work and excellent attendance of our sessions. Uh, without them, you know, all these things would not have been done successfully, so uh, I, uh, ask that we keep praying for them so that they can have the good health to come back during our next session, either regular or uh, special. I thank you, Chief Clerk, and Elsie and all those staff who are uh, present every day, uh, during our session. And if, uh, I may be not out of order, Mr. Speaker, I also want to say that, uh, uh, all our journals, uh, from day one until today should be uh, reviewed, uh, should be put together by the appropriate staff and be reviewed by the appropriate, uh, presiders before, uh, it can be, uh, filed, uh, wherever they can be filed. And, uh, if there is no more announcement, then I'm ready to make my motion of adjournment, but.
Can you make a motion, uh, Florida Leader on the, uh, uh?
Oh, okay. Uh, I, I moved that, uh, the journals would be, uh, reviewed and approved by the, uh, appropriate, uh, presiders.
Turn it.
That's been moved and seconded that, uh, our journals from day one until the day, uh, should be reviewed and approved by the presiding officers. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carried, so be it, okay, uh. If no other business from, uh, members, I will now, uh, give it to Florida Leader, make your motion.
Thank you, Speaker, I moved that our, uh, what is it, fourth special session.
Fourth special.
Fourth special session, special session is now our adjourned, sign of die.
Turn it.
Again.
Has been moved and seconded that the fourth special session of the twenty-second Congress, uh, be adjourned, uh, sign of die. Those in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 Boasne. Motion carried. The fourth special session of the twenty-second Congress of the Federated States of Margonisha is now adjourned, uh, sign of die.
Thank you.